1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399
All right, thank you all for your patience while we were in our executive session. We're calling the meeting back to order. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the staff please pass the microphone around, allow the audience to introduce themselves? Thank you.
Kim Messina with Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services.
Dennis Moon, Police Department.
Greg Sanders, Police Department.
Brian Treheal with the Police Department.
Mike Olbert, Citizen.
Josh Rowland, LAI Design Group.
Joe Huey with Lennar.
Ben Chapman, Elevation Midstream.
Anna Mullin.
Gier Moserna.
Dennis Flynn with Police Department.
Michelle Moggelson, Economic Development.
Brett Burrow, Burco Corporation.
Laura Moody, Economic Development.
Summer Sorenson-Bain, Manufacturers Edge.
Erica Davis.
Susan Noble.
Deborah Eggleston.
Shay Devlin.
Leslie Pollins.
Lana Thompson.
Ryan Seestrom.
Jenny Shaw at the Adams County Foundation.
Cassie Ratliff, Adams County Foundation and resident.
Christian Wolf, I live here in Commerce City.
Donovan Christie, Liberty Oilfield.
Damian Baca, Liberty Oilfield Services.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight. First item on the agenda is Proclamations. We start with National Manufacturing Day. I would like to invite the Economic Development staff forward to receive the proclamation. Laura, do you have anything you want to tell us about before I have the attorney read the proclamation?
I do, thank you. Mayor, Mayor Potem, Council members, thank you. October 5th, 2018, is National Manufacturing Day. Created by the founding partner Fabricators and the Manufacturers Association, this is a day to celebrate modern manufacturers and inspire the next generation through programs and activities. Manufacturing Day applauds companies that contribute so much to our economy and the lives of the workers employed by them. The event aims to empower these companies to address collective concerns and challenges in order to enhance the companies and in turn, the communities in which they operate. The event enables manufacturers to collectively face and work to solve common challenges like labor shortages as well as shape the public image of manufacturing and ensure the ongoing success of the industry as a whole. In honor of Manufacturing Day, we have two guests here tonight. The first is Summer Sorenson-Bain, Chief of Programs and Operations with Manufacturers Edge. Manufacturers Edge is a manufacturing assistance center with locations across the state. It aims to increase competitiveness and profitability of Colorado manufacturers through result-driven methodologies, best practices, and innovative technologies. Hundreds of Colorado manufacturers have benefited from its programs since its creation in 1994. Nationally, manufacturing companies account for 8% of the workforce through employment of over 12.7 million workers. Within Colorado, manufacturing employs over 143,000 Colorado residents in 4,834 companies across the state. These companies contribute to over $22 billion to the state's economy with $7.18 billion in manufactured goods exported out of Colorado last year. On the local level, over 100 Commerce City companies are manufacturers. Our second guest here tonight represents one of these, Brett Burrow, Director of Margin Management with the Burco Corporation. Burco is a female-owned business that has been in Commerce City for over 25 years. The company manufactures over 400 concentrated food safety solutions and provides safe chemical formulations, state-of-the-art harvest and dispensing equipment, servicing capabilities, and integrated IT solutions for beef, poultry, pork, produce, and even brewery applications. Tonight, we spotlight Burco Corporation as the company Commerce City's success story and an example of the manufacturers that create jobs and contribute to communities like ours. And now, Summer Sorenson-Bain would like to say a few words as well.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I just wanted to say a few words and thank you for your ongoing support of manufacturing. I believe we're at a very exciting time for manufacturing. We're seeing technology have this convergence into the way in which we have access to information right at our fingertips like we've never seen before. We have, we're in the midst of a major industrial revolution that's been coined Industry 4.0, that is technology and materials impacting the way that things are being made every day, making it more affordable and more complex than before. We're able to make features and characteristics that we couldn't do before with the invention of things such as 3D printing, robotics, and automation. The cool thing about it is that it's dependent on having manufacturers to make this technology. It's dependent on having manufacturers come up with new methods and bring them to the market. All of this doesn't go without challenges. We have ongoing challenges with workforce needs, specific to the skills gap through the Boomers retiring. We're about to see the largest transfer of private wealth as these individuals move into retirement. We also have greater risks in new technologies as things become more connected and have an increased need for improvements like cybersecurity. But despite all of these challenges, it's really an exciting time to be in manufacturing. I thank you for your ongoing support and for acknowledging such a critical sector to our state, and I'm proud to be a part of the manufacturing community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The city attorney, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Commerce City joins the U.S. Department of Commerce's National Institute of Standards and Technology, the Fabricators and Manufacturers Association International, the National Association of Manufacturers, the Manufacturing Institute, and Colorado's Manufacturers Edge in promoting and recognizing Manufacturing Day 2018. And whereas manufacturing employs over 12.7 million workers in the United States accounting for 8% of the workforce, and whereas manufacturing contributes over $22 billion to Colorado's economy with $7.18 billion in manufactured goods exported out of Colorado in 2017, and whereas manufacturing employs over 143,000 Colorado residents in 4,834 manufacturing companies across the state, and whereas manufacturing employs nearly 2,700 people in over 100 manufacturing companies in Commerce City with an average compensation of $72,700, and whereas the manufacturing sector is crucial to achieve the city council's goal of developing a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City honors Manufacturing Day and all the city's manufacturing companies for their entrepreneurial spirit that keep the city, state, and national economy growing stronger.
Thank you. Proclamation's been read. I'm open for a motion to approve the proclamation. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation for National Manufacturing Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frank.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Proclamation's been read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'd like to ask our economic development folks and the representatives from the two manufacturing companies that are here tonight to come on up by the podium, and council will join you for a picture with proclamation.
Let me try one at the flash. Sorry, guys. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right, the next item is another proclamation. It's for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'd like to invite the Victim Advocate Unit forward. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kim Messina. I'm the Victim Services Manager for Brighton and Commerce City. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for seeing us this evening and recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I want to give you just a few national statistics. That in the United States, an average of 20 people experience That in the United States, an average of 20 people experience intimate partner physical violence every minute. This equates to about 10 million victims annually. One in four women and one in nine men will experience severe intimate partner physical violence, as well as one in three women and one in four men have experienced some sort of physical violence in their intimate partner relationship. On a typical day, a domestic violence hotline nationwide receives about 20,000 calls of women and children who are in need of assistance. Intimate partner violence accounts for about 15% of all violent crime. Here in the City of Commerce City, last year, we responded on scene victim services to 344 reports of domestic violence serving 551 people, and that includes 312 on scene. One of the most difficult pieces of domestic violence is all of us know someone who has experienced or who might experience domestic violence in a relationship. And oftentimes, the worst thing is that we don't say anything or we don't recognize the signs of domestic violence. It's important to know that it's very difficult for victims to step out and say that they need some sort of help because it's hard to believe that the person that they love the most would treat them in such a manner or treat their children in such a manner. So it's important that we recognize the signs of domestic abuse and reach out. One thing I would like to say is here in Commerce City, we get tremendous support, not only from you, but the Chief, Chief Nichols, as well as command staff and all the men and women of the department. We go as far as any person who reports domestic violence crime is eligible for our services, and we pass those along to everyone that we can. So I'd really like to say thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm just doing the supporting.
Are you sure? I know, I know we all received information.
She wasn't going to come up here unless I walked up there with her.
Oh, no. I'm glad. Well, she needs a bodyguard. I know we recently all received information about a situation that took place over the weekend. Domestic violence situation, and it resulted in suicide. And it's a shame to see this on a daily basis. When you talk about the numbers, it's equivalent to one every day in our community that you're having to deal with. So we appreciate what you do and the services that you provide to our residents. With that said, I'd ask the city attorney to please read the proclamation.
Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread, an average of 20 Americans experience physical violence every minute, equating to more than 10 million abuse victims annually. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas despite tremendous progress, an average of three women in the U.S. die as a result of domestic violence each day. One in four women and one in nine men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the Mayor Sean Ford and the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And they urge the citizens of Commerce City to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion to approve the proclamation. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October.
Councilwoman Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now if council will join me down front, we'll give the proclamation to Ms. Messina. Brings us to our Citizen Communication portion of our meeting. Per council policy, Citizen Communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that may or before, may or may come before city council. Please reserve those comments for appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I do have a list of eight folks in the audience who are here for Citizen Communication when I call your name. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. We start with Casey. And Jen Shaw, are you coming up together?
We sure are.
Good, come on up.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Cassie Ratliff, and this is Jenny Shaw, and we are here on behalf of the Adams County Foundation and on behalf of the Adams County Commissioner's Office. And we would like to invite everyone to our first fundraiser coming up here in mid-October. The Adams County Foundation, the mission of the Adams County Foundation is to create equitable opportunities for all residents in Adams County. And we do that by supporting our local nonprofits, shelters, education programs, health programs, and things like that. This year, we gave over $900,000 in grants out to these organizations, but we had $2.3 million in requests. So we have our first fundraiser coming up. We are having an 80's prom. So time to bust out all of your 80's gear, Aquanet, all of that. We'll be over at that Riverdale Regional Park, the name just changed, on October 19th. And so we have flyers, and we're going to leave them at the back for you guys.
You can just, matter of fact, we can leave them right here with the city attorney.
Awesome, perfect, because I know he wants to go.
Yeah, he does. You ought to see his 80's gear.
We have heard a lot, we've heard some Patrick Dempsey look-alikes might be there, so I'm just saying, you might have some competition.
Yeah, that's right.
But thank you. We hope to see you guys there. Pricing is on our website. You can buy tickets online, you can sponsor online. Any and all opportunities are welcome to support our Adams County residents.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go to Shay Devlin. Are you coming up with her?
I'm going to come up with her because we're here for the same reason.
I know you are.
Thank you. My name is Shay Devlin. I'm at 14492 East 102nd Place.
And I'm Deborah Eggleston. I'm at 10090 Crystal Street.
We're here this evening because we'd like to ask the council to make a decision on a proposal that we believe has been in possession of the council since early 2018 regarding parking enforcement in metro districts and the HOA jurisdictions, allowing the metro districts and the HOAs to enforce parking within their boundaries. We have had a letter that has been sent to us by the city to ask us to remove no parking signs along 102nd Place. We've, we put the signs up as a preventative measure deterrent for the apartments at North Range Village Apartments to be overflow parking into our neighborhood. And we are asking council to make a decision on this so that we can put those signs back up and not have the apartments encroaching in our subdivision any longer as those departments start to become more filled when those buildings start to open. There are definitely not enough parking spaces for the amount of people that are going to be living there. And we do not and will not appreciate overflow parking and them being encroaching on our subdivision.
The other problem is, is where we put the no parking signs.
Scoot over just in front of the microphone so everybody can hear, thanks.
Where we put the no parking signs is right by our neighborhood park, and we don't want people parking there and hanging out at the park at night.
All right, well, first of all, I want to appreciate the fact that you guys have come in. Having outside entities enforce parking within different areas of our city and different subdivisions, it's not just relevant to the metro district that you're talking about at Fontana. It is, we've dealt with Bell Creek putting boots on people's cars. Not that there's any encroaching parking from apartments or anything like that, but when we talk about our public streets, that is enforced by our police department. We have to be careful that we don't treat some people in one neighborhood differently than others in another neighborhood when it comes to our public rights of way. If there is a problem with people from the apartments parking in the subdivision, we need to address that, and how do we, how do we deal with that? And I would go to our city staff to work with the apartment management because I wouldn't want people from a neighboring development or apartment complex parking in front of my house that would affect my parking. However, there are also people in the audience who have been before this council at Citizen Communication concerned with the no parking signs, that it is forcing people that lived in the neighborhood that parked where the no parking signs are now to park in front of other people's homes and restrict their parking. So one thing leads to another, and I think that it comes down to instead of having a metro district enforce parking or put up parking signs or not put up parking signs or having the city make you take those signs down, that the metro district and our city staff should be sitting down with our police enforcement and figuring out how to take care of the problems that are arising with the situation because each reaction causes a negative reaction on other residents within the neighborhood. So I'm trying to be as fair as we can to be able to take care of this. And I'm not the city council, I'm one member of nine, but I personally think that we should direct the staff to meet with the metro district and talk with our police department about, do they need to send a letter over to the apartments given some restrictions to what's happening? But I can't have one community like Bell Creek booting vehicles, another community putting up no parking signs where residents can't park in front of their homes, and how do we still meet the obligation of not letting people from a neighboring apartment facility to take up space in your neighborhood as well? So I would like to ask our staff what they think and what a plausible idea would be. Because I'm not trying to tell you, you can't have no parking signs there. What I'm trying to tell you is that there needs to be no parking signs there because it's a city right-of-way, that it needs to be Commerce City no parking signs. Because what happens is we had signs show up and residents come in and go, why'd you put these signs up? No, we didn't. And so I think collaboration number one, to know that we're all on the same page is most important. Secondly, taking care of the problem so that it doesn't, so that there's no, the least amount of impacts on our residents that live in your subdivision that we can, we can have. So Brian, do you have any suggestions?
These ladies are bringing forward the latest of what have been a number of parking situations in city neighborhoods this year. It seems to be the topic of the year this year. As a result, we have scheduled on the city council's study session agenda for November 26th, a city council discussion of parking policy. We do have current, we do have regulations in place to regulate parking in residential areas. So the discussion that night would both be about whether those regulations are the appropriate regulations for our community, but also to talk about appropriate levels of enforcement of those regulations. The new issue that's popped up this year is the desire by some neighborhoods to do their own parking enforcement, which presents some, some problems, given those are public streets. So November 26th would be the night that we've planned for city council to have a robust discussion of parking enforcement in residential areas. So you might want to attend that evening. You might find it interesting to listen to that discussion, and it'll touch on a number of the issues that the mayor's talked about. It's a, it is a complex issue.
Can I ask if there is any, I do, it is my understanding that the City of Thornton has an ordinance in place that allows their HOAs and districts to regulate the parking in there, enforce the parking in those neighborhoods, those HOA boundaries. Under their covenant. So we would request that you, that somebody is speaking to the City of Thornton because it's been on the City of Thornton ordinance for over 20 years, and they have had little to zero, zero to few problems in over 20 years. So it isn't something that has never been done in the state of Colorado, and Thornton is our neighbor. So we would ask that there is some discussion there as to how it's enforced with Thornton because they seem to be able to handle it as well, handle it very well. And perhaps maybe take some unnecessary burden off of the already understaffed police force having to deal with these parking issues if metro districts and HOAs are given a little more leniency to be able to enforce those parking situations.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, I would direct the staff to reach out to Thornton, see what they do have. We're always looking for best practices and how to improve operations. But I would invite both of you to come back to our study session when we have this discussion. And we'd like to have information on Thornton's ordinance before we have the study session. So appreciate you both coming in and look forward to seeing you at that study session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Olbrich. Good evening.
You know, I was here in concern for Public Works.
Can I, real quick, just get you to say your name and address for the record?
Michael Olbrich, 7231 East 69th Avenue.
Great, thank you.
You know, I kind of had a real negative experience over at Public Works today, and I was told by a guy named Trent that I can go to the city, I could go to the building department, I can go to Neighborhood Services, and I could even come to city council, so that's why I'm here tonight. So I'm here actually in regards to Public Works and their issuance of right-of-way cut permits being issued. In the permit, there's an area for a city review. I believe for the purpose of the city to review the permits for the possible further requirements and land development codes regarding fences and setbacks. After speaking with the senior building official today, Patrick Buckley, he had no idea what I was talking about and needed me to send him a photo of the Public Works permits, as if he never heard of it before. So I guess my concerns are about how many permits were issued which could impact the public safety. Because when I spoke with Trent today, he had said to me that he does 700 to 900 of these permits in a year, but he never sends obviously nothing ever over to the Public Works. And this impacts like the setbacks and the safety for people. Like when they issue a cut curb thing, if there's an existing fence there, it should have a 20-foot setback. And on their, on their right-of-way permit, which is a real specific permit, there is an area for a city review where it says date received and comments, like special comments, which would include the setbacks. So, you know, I guess my concerns is that, you know, when he says it's 700 to 900 permits, Patrick Buckley's never heard of it before. Is that profit over safety?
No, I would venture to say, Patrick Buckley is the building inspector.
Senior building official.
Chief building official. He oversees the building inspectors, and so they're focused on the building side of it. Planning and development, Chris Kramer, is Chris even here today, tonight, no? I didn't see him. But I can tell you our Public Works director is here. But when they issue a permit for a fence, of course, there's not going to be a street cut.
Right away.
Right away, okay? But if they, if there's something that's going to be in the street that would cause a safety issue, they follow through with that, and the departments that are required to see that for safety purposes. Michelle, Michelle Halsted's in the, in the room tonight. Michelle, can you speak to that process of building permit, or not building permits, right-of-way permits? And, but it's not profit over safety. But I would like to, I'd like to hear from our staff. Brian?
Sounds like this might be a rather specific issue. Maybe the best thing to do is to have Ms. Maybe the best thing to do is to have Ms. Halsted speak with Mr. Ulrich. We'd be happy to report back to city council what we learned about that conversation. I, I think you're right on, Mayor. The building department would review permits for structures. If a fence is involved in a street cut permit, building safety could be involved. But if it's just a street cut permit, it doesn't sound like that would involve the building safety division. But with more information, we can dig into this specific situation and hopefully address Mr. Ulrich's concern while at the same time providing city council an update.
That would be great. I'd appreciate that.
All right. So, I need to address everything to her then?
Honestly, the best person to talk to in the room is Michelle Halsted, who is our acting director of Public Works, is Trent's boss. And then, whatever the outcome is, Michelle will report that through Brian, the city manager, and the council will be updated as to what the results are.
Right. Is that of any concern to you guys, though, that 700 to 900 permits have been issued by, by Public Works and nothing has ever been sent to Patrick Buckley? He didn't even have a clue what a right-of-way permit was. I had to send him a photo of it to show him where it says the city review on it.
I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But when we're talking about structures versus Public Works and, and right-of-ways, the, the building official doesn't normally see stuff that would be happening in the right-of-way. So, they're, they're, to me, they're two different things. And I'm trying to get a, a answer to how they would tie together, and that is the purpose for you, meeting with Ms. Halsted.
All right.
All right?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, next, Susan Noble. Susan? Um, you can wait until then, but let's see, is that on the consent agenda? It is not. So, will we allow public comment at that time? That's, that's all I needed to know. Yes, Susan, that would be fine. You can comment at that time. Ben Chapman, same thing?
Same.
All right, thank you. All right, Ann Trahill.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Ann Trahill, 11358 East 116th Place. And I'm coming before you all regarding the fireworks and the fees that have been imposed for citizens. The fee is a $500 fee, which does not include court fee, which is $697 fee. You can have somebody that is driving over the speed limit, and they get a $180 fine. And then, once they come to court, that fee then is reduced. But when you have a ticket that's regarding a firework, there's nothing that can be done with that fee. And that person has to pay $697. That's a week, that's a month's worth of groceries for somebody. That is two maybe car payments, that's half of a mortgage payment, and nothing can be done. But yet, Commerce City can allow fireworks to be sold, which is one that's located on 100, Highway 85 and 112th. There's a stand there. So, Commerce City is not only making money off of the citizens for the fine, but they're also making money off of the sales tax that have been made on those fireworks. Now, the state of Colorado allows fountains and things that are not up in the air. So, why doesn't, why didn't Commerce City consider that? And why are they gouging the citizens $500 fine and then turning around and making money off of the sales tax of those fireworks that are being sold?
Well, first...
I mean, what good did that do? What, what good did that do? I have a friend that lives right over here, right over here off of Quebec. His neighborhood was firing their fireworks until 12 o'clock at night. Police officers were there, they passed by, they watched, never issued a ticket. So, what good is it imposing fines to certain individuals, but not, not catching everybody? If, if there's not, if there's going to be a legal ban, then there should be no fireworks allowed to be sold in Commerce City, period.
First of all, let me thank you for coming in tonight. Secondly, there's a few things that I want to point out. Commerce City did ban all fireworks years ago, before my time. And they are, they're still banned in Commerce City. We do not allow fireworks. We do not allow any fireworks stands in Commerce City. We do not generate any taxes off fireworks sold in Commerce City. Fireworks are illegal in Commerce City. Last year, we had two homes that were burned down because of illegal fireworks in the city of Commerce City. When Commerce City decided to have one of the biggest fireworks display controlled and having our fire district involved and, and participating, they were the ones lighting them off to begin with, is when they banned the fireworks in the public. Because we wanted to make sure folks in our community had a venue to be able to go and view fireworks during the Fourth of July and celebrate. However, last year, we were giving out, our, our police department was giving out tickets, and they would ticket the same people five and six times because they would not adhere. And so, what this council had to deal with is lists of people coming in here, these lists that I call people up, and I literally had them bringing bags of burnt fireworks out of the street and dumping them in, in the middle of, of the floor of city hall. Because they demanded that we uphold our fireworks regulations, which we don't allow any fireworks. This council took a stand because of all the complaints we were getting, because of the amount of illegal fireworks that were going off in this city a month before and a month after Fourth of July. And the impact it had to residents, pets, veterans that, that had issues with noises because of their, what, what happened to them while, while they were away fighting for the country. We decided the only way to be able to get people to realize that these are illegal, when they laugh at a $100 fine, is to increase the fine to $500. And that's why that fine was increased. And I know our police department chief, how many violations or how many citations did you give out this last year at that $500 required fine that the council put forward? Do you have, you have a recollection of how many?
I've been told it was 78.
78?
At last count.
At last count, we gave out 78 violations, so, so we could get people to stop violating our laws.
78?
78.
Out of how many citizens in, in Commerce City? You're not going to, it's not going to stop anybody from doing fireworks. 78 is not going to stop anything.
I disagree. It would stop, it would stop me, if I got one $500 ticket, it would stop me from lighting anymore off.
But you are allowing fire stands to be there. 112th and Highway 85 is Commerce City?
Absolutely not.
Then who's, who's jurisdiction?
That's unincorporated Adams County, ma'am.
See, and that's my point, okay?
And we have talked to the county, and we have asked them to not put or allow fireworks stands on our borders. And one of them that normally is there would be at 120th and Highway 85 at Tail Feathers Bar.
Right, Tail Feathers has one too. That's Henderson.
They did not, not this year. And part of Henderson is in Commerce City, part of it's in Brighton. Henderson is not a city.
Right.
So, so you don't have a city's jurisdiction of Henderson. But the one that was at Tail Feathers wasn't there this last year. The only one that we had on our border that I know of was the one in unincorporated Adams County on the southwest corner of Highway 85 and 112th.
By Bell Creek.
But I want to let you know, that is not Commerce City. That's unincorporated Adams County. And you do not generate taxes off that fireworks stand.
So, there is nothing there?
No, there is nothing here.
So, I, I can understand what you're saying is to, you know, try to get the same citizens over and over again. If you charge them those fines and fines, I mean, eventually, that's going to lead to maybe jail time to where they'll learn that they can't do this. But if you have somebody who has never done anything wrong and the first time a fence, first time offense, there should be some type of a negotiation for that. If you have repeat offenders, then yes. Then you should continue fining them or continue to do something so they can maybe understand never to do it again. But if you have somebody who is a first offense, and especially buying a fountain or something that's not going to be anything that's going to cause a fire in any way, I, there has to be a difference between the two. The extreme and not extreme. And I understand, and that's why people have home insurance. I mean, things like this happen, a fire, a fire happens, that's when their, their house insurance covers in or kicks in. So, I, I mean, what you're saying out of those 78 people, 78 people, whether they're repeat offenders or not, $697 of a fine is, is to me ridiculous. I can say 250 last year was what you did. The city of Westminster right now allows fireworks. There's no, there's no ban of fireworks in Westminster. So, I, I think you have to look at the citizens themselves. I mean, if you had an overwhelming amount of people that were fined, that said, "You know what? I did a good thing. I, I generated this news, and everybody's understanding this." But 78 people is not going to make anybody stop fireworks. It's not.
Well...
But by giving somebody an individual fine that has never had anything whatsoever, at $697, that's ridiculous to the citizen who has, who has to pay that fine.
Well, I...
And I would like for the, for the future, you know, for, for the people that have paid that and first offense, you know, give them a break. You know, this is a first offense. Or, but $697 is just, is outrageous, when you can, again, have somebody driving, you know, 20 miles over the speed limit that can cause serious injury or death, and they're going to come in and they're going to pay a $180 fine, and then the judge is going to say, "I'm going to reduce it to $80." Where's the fairness in that? Same thing in death or a fire.
Two different things.
Not at all.
It is...
Death and fire is the same. Destruction.
Ma'am, let me explain. State law recognizes what the fines can be on traffic violations, not just the city council. We don't go, "Okay, let's make anybody going over 10 miles an hour is going to get a $500 fine." That's not how that works. We had years and years of more than 79 people showing up after the Fourth of July in our council chambers, saying that they wanted us to increase the fines and stop allowing illegal fireworks to be violation of our city ordinance, which does not allow fireworks. And me buying insurance for my house or any of the residents buying insurance for their house is not in case somebody's firework goes through the garage door and lights their house on fire, and let me finish.
It will.
So, that's not why we have insurance, especially if we live in a city that has a law that does not allow fireworks. And so, my point being, this council, after years of having people come in here upset that there was too many illegal fireworks going off and no, no one was abiding by our laws because our fines were too weak, we actually went above and beyond what our judge recommended and set a fine of $500 that could not be negotiated down to get the message across to our residents not to light illegal fireworks, it's against the law. And I have...
It's against Commerce City, not the state of Colorado.
It's Commerce City's law, yes ma'am.
Not the state of Colorado.
That's right.
Not the state of Colorado.
That's Commerce City's law.
And so, by you doing this, this mitigating anybody not lighting any fireworks, where there look, where there's still fireworks being lit.
You know what? Speed limit signs on, on the, on our streets.
But they were, and it's going to be every year.
They still speed.
It's not going to stop until something actually is done by not having any stands, period. Because if you go across the border to Wyoming and buy fireworks, then yes, that's illegal because you're bringing them over the border. But when you go to Brighton, you go, Brighton has their stands, you go, like you said, the unincorporated booth right there with saling stands, people don't know the difference between unincorporated Commerce City, Thornton, or wherever until they see their signs. So, I live in River Run, right across the street. You know, people that are living there, they're not going to know the difference between unincorporated and, and Commerce City. And they're going to go and buy those fireworks, and they're going to think that everything is fine because they think that's part of Commerce City. And they're going to buy those fireworks, and they're going to light it, and they're going to get a fine. So, it's, it's, you, something needs to be done with that, that spot. That spot needs to be, nothing allowed, or a sign that says, "This is unincorporated, do not buy fireworks." Because that's why I bought my fireworks, thinking that it was part of Commerce City, until you told me now that's unincorporated. So, you have citizens, citizens that are thinking, "That is Commerce City, and Commerce City is allowing that."
Right. Well, and, and I live in River Run too, and I know every year we put up sign message boards that say, "Fireworks are illegal in Commerce City."
There was not one that on the Fourth of July until, like, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock posted. Before that, there were no signs.
There was one on 104th Avenue, two weeks, three weeks before Fourth of July.
Did not see, and I, I drive it all the time.
Well, I, I'm sorry.
But I'm very, I'm very upset about this.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you're upset, and I'm sorry that you had to pay a fine. But I will tell you, if my own child violated that fine, I'd come in here and pay it because I know that you're not supposed to do it. And hopefully, people at home are watching this, and they realize, we, we have a no tolerance policy that this council put into place before the Fourth of July this year that said mandatory $500 fine. It's up to the nine people up here to change that if they so desire. I am just reciting to you what the law is. And no, we don't have any fireworks stands or allow any fireworks stands in the city.
Okay, well, then, I make a suggestion. Try to have that stand not go up in a year, in a year after, if possible.
Well, all we can do...
Because you're going to be fighting the same battle with people.
Absolutely.
And people are going to be very upset, thinking the same thing that I thought. And it's unfair.
Well, we're constantly, we're constantly talking to the county commissioners and trying to get them not to allow permits for stands near our border. However, they did issue a permit, and all we can do is ask the county not to allow a permit for that location. But we do not have jurisdictional coverage or, or authority of whether that permit gets issued or not. That is the county. But we'll continue to ask that that not be allowed.
Or a sign would be great.
Yep.
You know, be aware, this is not part of Commerce City. If you're really trying to fight that, then there has to be some type of a sign so everybody is aware of that as well. And I've lived in my area for 18 years, 18 years. And, you know, again, that, that stand has been there every single year, every single year. And, you know, not alone, not just getting a ticket, but then I had to be reissued another ticket because the police officer had made an error on the first ticket. And then calls and says, "Three choices. You know, I can go by and, and make the correction, reissue, or put a warrant out for your arrest." So, you know, this wasn't a fun thing for me this year. You know, $697, and again, threatened by the police officer that, you know, he made the mistake. I made a mistake. I had to pay the $697. He made a mistake, and nothing happened to him. But yet, saying he was going to put a warrant out for my arrest. So, you know, that's unfair to a citizen as well.
I understand. I, I don't know what that interaction was, but the chief is hearing what you said.
Yes, and I did talk to the sergeant, because I called right away because that was a threatening phone call from that police officer.
Sure, then that, that's what you should have done. But I want to thank you for coming forward tonight and at least letting us know of your concern.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I hope you take consideration about that one stand.
Yes, just a second. Councilwoman Elliott, you have a comment?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And just, just to reiterate, regardless of the, the boundaries or the borders of where Adams County has their stands, bottom line, illegal, you know, fireworks are illegal within the city. And so, again, to the mayor's point, I just want to reiterate this so we can kind of let this stop at this point. But it's just a matter of, we had to send out a strong message. I've been on council for seven years, and every year, and I've witnessed it in my own neighborhood. And you can't possibly catch everyone, but 78 is, is more than, than, I mean, enough to, to send a strong message. And so, we're hoping that moving forward, we can, we can just eliminate this altogether. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming in.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single, a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council have any desire to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing no one, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Teter?
I'd like to make a motion to present the five items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda?
Resolution 2018-67, resolution approving third amended and restated establishing contract for the E470 public highway authority. Resolution 2018-75, resolution authorizing award of contract for fitness equipment at the Eagle Point Recreation Center. Resolution 2018-76, resolution authorizing contract award for the 88th Avenue environmental assessment and conceptual design services. Resolution 2018-77, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement for landlord-tenant legal services pilot program. Ordinance 2181, an ordinance creating section 12-2011 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding entrance upon closed public grounds and repealing ordinance 2160.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously this evening with one excused absence. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, ordinance Z-772-01-04-18. I remind council... I remind council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until public hearing is closed to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to give their presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Case before the members of the council this evening is case number Z-seven-seven-two-zero-one-zero-four-one-eight. This is a PUD amendment request to allow single-family detached dwellings. The property owner is Stratus Buffalo Highlands LLC and the applicant is Lennar. The subject property is currently zoned PUD as outlined in the blue polygon behind you on the slide. All the surrounding properties of this tract are also zoned PUD. The future land use plan designates this tract as residential high. Properties to the south, east, and west are also designated as residential medium. Properties further to the west are designated as open space. And properties to the north are designated as park, public, and a mixture of residential high and residential medium. Current site conditions, as you can see in the photographs provided before you, to the east, south, and west, there's quite a bit of earthwork movement going on. And in the bottom right-hand corner is a June shot of the earthwork of the site. And you can see there's quite a bit of dirt movement going on. The applicant is requesting approval of the PUD zone document to allow construction of single-family attached dwellings. And this is inside the Buffalo Highlands Plan Unit Development. The subject property is a twenty-three-point-two acre portion of Buffalo Highlands, also known as Planning Area A. The basis for this request before council is due to an LDC definition of townhouse. Townhouse definition excludes single-family attached dwellings. And the actual wording of the definition is provided for you at the bottom of the screen where the last sentence specifically excludes single-family attached dwellings from being defined as a townhome. The Area A is designated only for townhomes and that is pretty much the basis for this request. The applicant submitted a conceptual site plan with this amendment request that includes one-hundred-and-sixty-four single-family attached dwellings. This is roughly seven dwelling units per acre and this falls within the parameters of Planning Area A's range of dwelling unit allowed sizes between six and fifteen dwelling units per acre. The area that's shown would be accessed from the east, from a proposed street, which will be Telluride Street in the future, and from the south, from East Ninety-Fourth Way. All of this right now is currently under construction. That would provide an interior street network for Planning Area A to provide access to these dwellings. The applicants included some open space and pocket parks throughout the neighborhood on the west, north, and south corners of the site. And as you can see here in the center block, they provided a private park area that would meet our requirements. Stormwater will be directed through the site to a detention pond in the southwest corner of the property. Just a quick snapshot of the existing PUD zone document for Buffalo Highlands. Highlighted in red is Area A that's the subject of this amendment. Area D, south of, or excuse me, west of Area A, has been developed and currently has a number of single-family detached dwellings constructed within it. Areas B and C are currently under construction that will also include single-family detached dwellings. Future filings to be submitted to the city are areas E, F, and G. They are also for single-family detached dwellings. Included with that would be a dedication of H for Grandma Gulch and the drainage that's involved with that. Area J and Area K have already been dedicated. J to the Second Creek Regional Greenway and parcel K to the public park system. Also included with their PUD amendment request were some attached, some single-family attached lot standards. And as you can show, they're showing a typical private drive access from a roadway that would include both pedestrian connection and vehicle connection to the roadway itself. The pedestrian connection would be provided to each dwelling unit on the drive as well as individual driveway pads that would be in front of each one of the homes. Each home will have its own two-car garage. So, this basically equals four parking spaces per dwelling. Each home will be fee simple and have their own fenced backyards and things of that nature. The planning commission has made their recommendation based on the approval criteria outlined in the Land Development Code and that is outlined before the council in this list. This was the basis for their consideration. And on September fourth, the planning commission had recommended approval as submitted with a vote of four to zero to the city council for this PUD amendment request. As of today, staff has not received any objections or requests for additional information. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Does the city council- Does the city council have any questions for staff pertaining to this development? Councilwoman Frank. Questions for staff or no? Okay. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for explaining this. Since this is going, well, they're putting application to go from townhomes to single-family, has that fall with the service agreement that's been established? As far as the mills, what exactly are these, you know, if this is built, constructed, what would the mills be for each unit?
That's a good question, but I'm sorry, I don't know that information.
Okay.
We'll have the applicant up here in a minute and you can ask that.
All right.
All right. Mr. Wadiola.
Thank you. Why didn't they start with single families? Why did they start with the townhomes first and now we're trying to amend it?
It's a good question. I don't think there was any chronological order or any specific order that they had to follow based on the diagram of the PUD zone document as far as letters A, B, through. I don't think there was anything that was regulated that required them to submit any one specifically at one time. Considering that areas D and A were closer to East Ninety-Sixth Avenue, I think that's just, was their starting point where they could extend infrastructure off Ninety-Sixth Avenue. So, D and A would have been the first choices, I think, by the developer.
So, is there not going to be no townhomes at all around there?
Not as part of the development, no. If this request is approved, then they would, that would preclude them from having to build any townhomes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Councilwoman Frank?
On the parking, where we say that there's seven-hundred-and-thirty-one guest spaces, is that included in their four spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there's just the seventy-five spaces for street parking and no other?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilwoman Frank, because the last thing I want is for a future council to have to deal with Metro District putting up signs on our right-of-way to stop parking because of higher densities to, next to a subdivision. So, we need to keep that in account. We're seeing that more and more these days. If there's no more questions for staff, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. Do you have anything to add to the presentation from our staff?
Yes, we have a brief presentation for you tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Rowland. I'm with LAI Design Group. We're at eighty-eight Inverness Circle East in Inglewood, Colorado. Brad, if you would jump ahead, I'm going to skip the slides that you've already explained that describe the request. You know, it's very typical in zoning ordinances that a townhome-type density allows for both townhomes and single-family attached. And I just wanted to clarify that this is still an attached product. It's still a medium-to-high-density range of product type. Many builders in the marketplace today have homes that meet this same density target in a variety of ways. I'm sure you've seen cluster products. You've seen driveway court products. This product here, this home type is a, it's a similar density to a townhome. It's a paired home product. Each of these shared driveways has about eight units on it. And as it relates to parking, each, you know, I think what you're seeing in the marketplace today when you see these variations of townhomes are a similar price point with a lot of the benefits of townhomes as well as the benefits of a single-family home. Each of these homes has a two-car driveway out in front of it. So, your guests can park right in front of your, right in front of your home. But you have a lot of the benefits of a townhome living where you have very minimal yard to maintain, but you still get a little bit of yard so that you can let the dog outside or just have a little bit of privacy that you might not otherwise have with a townhome. This home type has a front porch that faces to the street, so we still get some attractive streetscapes along the public right-of-way. Another benefit that this particular product provides is that you only have one driveway cut for eight homes. And so, you get a lot of nice continuous tree lawn along the public streets. That also provides for a lot of additional on-street parking for guests in addition to the, to the actual sixteen spaces per cluster that we have here. So, while it's not specifically a townhome, I think there's a lot of additional benefits. Brad, if you'd go to the next slide. This is a more kind of black and white diagram of the products. You can get a sense for the dimensions. So, along a street front, you have about one-hundred-and-ninety feet of width. And if you take twenty feet out of that for the driveway cut in the middle, you're left with around one-hundred-and-seventy linear feet. So, that's at least eight spaces of on-street parking. So, we've got, what is that, twenty-four spaces per eight-pack, if you will, of parking. And I kind of drive that point home just to say that this is parked very generously from a guest parking standpoint. You know, in a townhome development, I think your code is somewhere around about point-two-five spaces per unit. So, you'd only get one space for every four units. So, this is very generous in comparison. So, that was a point that staff questioned us extensively about and we were able to, you know, show them with these points that this is an adequately parked development. Brad, if you'd go to the next slide, please. And this is a color rendering of the site. The black and white one doesn't show as well all of the, kind of the green space that's left. We do have some nice setbacks along Ninety-Sixth and along our other collector roadways. We have a nice pocket park that's along what we're kind of identifying as our main entrance from the east. And then we have some other kind of additional setbacks along some of the internal local streets to create some softening of a few of those edges. Again, we've got a really nice streetscape in the sense that there's plenty of detached sidewalk and tree lawn that kind of do the victory lap around our internal street. I think that'll make for a nice kind of a walking route in the community. This overall development does have some nice park and open space as well. So, I think this certainly meets the intent of the original PUD for a townhome-level density. And it provides a new and unique product for Commerce City. So, with that, I tried to at least answer some questions about some of the questions and concerns I heard at the beginning. So, if you have additional questions, I'm here to answer those.
Thank you. I do know with construction defects, over the years, we've had a hard time trying to get builders of owner-occupied multifamily units. And we've seen several developments in that northern area have to come in and ask to get rid of their PUDs that state there's going to be some multifamily development because of lack of ability to build it. So, I'm glad that we have a product that is going to be more affordable for maybe first-time homeowners and things of that nature. I would just caution the council not to let all of our multifamily opportunities go by the wayside or we won't have any. It's also important to point out that areas with multifamily and with higher densities are what we need to increase customer base for those sit-down restaurants and other commercial services that we're trying to attract. So, thank you. Main thing for me is, you mentioned these side roads, that there's some parking along the sides because of the parking that is available for the tenant and guest. That is exactly what the concern with, that you heard earlier about Fonterra subdivision. It's that that side road isn't wide enough to adequately allow parking with the amount of traffic flows that are on that side road. So, I would just really be interested to know what is the width of those side roads, like Ninety-Fourth Way? It looks like fifty-six foot right-of-way. Is that enough for parking on both sides and two lanes, two full movement of traffic?
Yes, I believe that's correct. That should allow for both on-street parking on each side of the street.
Right. And we don't happen to know what that main street along Fonterra is? You know, does anybody know what that width is? Because it is actually a little narrow, especially with the curves that are in it. So, part of my concern about design and when we talk about parking along the side of a development, I just don't want to run into more, we should learn from some of our mistakes and make sure that we're developing our infrastructure properly so that we don't run into these negative impacts that we're seeing in other areas. But that's really my only major concern is how big these side roads are and can they handle on-street parking and, you know, good flows of traffic through there. Is there any other questions for the applicant from the city council? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here and presenting this. Question I had was the residential ratio versus townhome ratio as far as the number of people living in this space. Because I'm looking at also the school district. School district's been, you know, been impacted. They just reduced the ability for the students to be going to school for five days to four days. And this impact of what you have here, what's replacement? Is this providing more areas to construct or is it less than it would be for townhomes?
The range that was identified on the PUD for townhomes, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe was six to twelve?
Six to fifteen.
Six to fifteen. So, we are in that range. We're on the lower end. We're at seven. So, and I'll tell you, from having done a lot of townhome projects over the years, they usually range in that six to ten. It's very rare that you see townhomes get up to fifteen to the acre. So, we are in the specified range that the PUD originally intended.
Okay. And then the two-car garage, I know the intent is to sell this two-car garage and end up with a garage and a half based on the type of vehicle you, of course, own. And I know up off Chambers and Hundred and Sixteenth, we had shared driveways and there were some lots that were abandoned and then another developer came in to build homes in those spots. And the product they put in was not sufficient to the parking as far as shared. So, it ended up, the shared concept didn't work after all. And then looking at your design here, also concerned about fire safety, fire department coming in there, see the way the streets are because certain neighborhoods, we, it's been set to have a certain width so you can have cars on both sides and be able to have cars actually go down the road at the same time, too. This here, way this designed, it's kind of narrow in, you know, as you go around the community here. So, what's the accessibility for our fire departments to access this in case things do go wrong?
Well, we would have originally liked to build it a little more narrow, but because of our conversations with your fire department and with South Adams Water and Sanitation District, it's wider than it was originally planned. We have a twenty-foot space in the shared driveway plus the twenty-feet, twenty or nineteen-foot driveways on either side. So, it's pretty generous in relation, if we'd have had a townhome development, you might have had a thirty-foot-wide alley in between garages. So, everybody has signed off on that from both a utility and a fire standpoint.
Okay. And then as far as looking at this, this is a bigger map here compared to what we have right here. Are you allowed to go in here and exit there or these are just all?
Those are all dead-end driveways.
All dead-end driveways?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the construction of those in-between roads leading up to your different units, would that be constructed with hardscape like cobblestones, concrete, or asphalt?
It'll be a combination of concrete and cobble.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, another question I had, since our department couldn't answer that. Is this within as far- Is this within, as far as the service agreement that you have with the city currently, how will this help out the residents there as far as like the mill levy will be introduced to them? And how long are the terms?
These will be under the exact same agreement as the single-family houses. So they'll all have the same mills assessed. There will possibly be an increase in a maintenance set of mills so that there can be some HOA-type services provided. But the way that this is plotted and done, we will not require an HOA, but there'll be a little bit of additional maintenance for shoveling the driveways and that kind of thing.
Okay. And this agreement is still the same as the 30-year agreement?
Yes. Nothing new.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council for the applicant? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to open it up to the audience if anybody has any questions or concerns on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward? Saying no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. What's the council's desire for the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Z 772-01-04-18? Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Z Day 772-01-04-18.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission recommendations on Z 772-01-04-18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, I have seven ayes, one nay, for the record. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to approve ordinance Z 772-01-04-18. My counsel is seated on the first reading. Is there a motion? Mr. Madera?
Move to approve ordinance Z 772-01-04-18. My counsel is seated.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Davis?
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance Z 772-01-04-18. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance Z 772-01-04-18, an ordinance approving the Buffalo Highlands PUD Zone Document Amendment Number One.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, motion's carried. Seven in favor, one opposed, and one excused. Thank you for coming in this evening. All right, next item on the agenda is resolutions. We start with Resolution 2018-74. This matter was referred by the city council legislative subcommittee on September 10th with a recommendation to oppose. Is there anyone on council with any questions regarding this resolution? Mr. Douglas?
Not just this year. I know there's other amendments, proposals that are on our ballot this year, several of them. And I'm asked if the council would look at not taking position on one of, not just this one, but all four.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I have a motion to not take a position on all, on any ballot measure coming forward for November by this body. Is there a second? Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second not to take any position on any ballot measures for this upcoming election in November. I'll ask for a roll call vote to determine where the council stands.
Do you still want to?
Sure. Yeah, we could have some discussion before we vote. Mr. Davis, go ahead.
Just be clear on that. The motion is to not, I'm sorry, to...
To not take a position?
Not take a position on all four?
On any ballot measure coming before the state of Colorado or anything for this upcoming election.
Thank you.
That's a yes for that, right, Mayor? A yes not to take a position?
It would be a yes vote not to take a position, but now that we're in discussion, I want to have some discussion myself. I do think there are several ballot measures that are impactful to our state. And because of that, I think we have an obligation to take a position on some of these. I also know we have some other measures. We're going to see the fire district in this council chambers in the next couple of weeks with a request for us to support their mill levy increase. And things that have, or could have a negative impact, or things that could have a positive impact on this city, we should take a stand on. And so I will be voting no, because there are some of these things that I think we absolutely should take a position on. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Wardiola?
I'm kind of in the same boat, but I'd like to maybe put these four on an upcoming study session so we can get more information on both sides before we make a decision. Because I think it's important that we do make a decision, but I just want to learn more about each and each issues.
Any other discussion? Saying none, I'll ask for that roll call vote. For the record, motion fails. Five opposed, three in favor. So now I'm back to the drawing board as to resolution opposing Amendment 74, which attempts to amend the Colorado Constitution to drastically limit state and local government services at high cost to taxpayers. 2018-74, is there a motion? Mr. Douglas?
Motion to oppose Amendment 74, as stated.
Okay, so that's a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-74, which is opposing Amendment 74. Is there any discussion necessary? Saying none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right. Next, resolution in opposition to Proposition 109, a transportation bond initiative called Fix Our Damn Roads. This matter was also referred to the city council by the legislative subcommittee. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this resolution? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on Fix Our Damn Roads 109 ballot measure? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Frank?
I motion to approve Resolution 2018-79.
Okay, Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-79 in opposition to Proposition 109, a transportation bond initiative. Is there any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next is Resolution 2018-80, resolution in support of Proposition 110, also known as Let's Go Colorado statewide transportation solution ballot issue. This matter was referred to the city council by the legislative subcommittee. Does anyone on council have any questions? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to, on Resolution 2018-80, to support 110.
Okay, Councilwoman Frank?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to talk to us about this resolution in support of 110? Saying no one, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is Resolution 2018-81, resolution in opposition to Proposition 112, a setback requirement for oil and gas development. This matter was also referred by the city council legislative committee on September 10th with recommendation to oppose. Anyone on council have any questions regarding this resolution? Mr. Teeter?
Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes, on this proposal of 112, we've had a lot of discussion on this. Right now, we currently don't have any permits. No one's doing any, I mean, no one in the industry has been issued a permit. This is a very highly controversial proposal here. And, you know, I've had a lot of, well, we all have had a lot of emails from our citizens for us to take a position on this as far as supporting 112. I'm sure we've had, I haven't had too many, except for Ryan, opposing this. And I just think we need to caution ourselves as council, because you know the direction we had two weeks ago was to look at the health and safety and welfare of our community. This as well is in front of us to look at our health and welfare and safety of our community as a whole. And so my position on this, I will be voting no on this, because I think we should actually stay neutral on this, because right now we have no activity going on in Commerce City and pay attention to what's going on. This right here would not sit well in our community if we decide to oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Is there any more discussion on this ballot measure? Mr. Madera?
Yeah, you know, this is obviously a very controversial topic, as it is. And while I don't agree with, you know, the ballot initiative and how it was written, I believe it's a little bit excessive. I think the state ultimately has controlled where oil and gas goes and where drilling happens. So as we know on this council, this issue is largely out of our hands to begin with, because everything goes through the state. And by the time they come to us and we have something to vote on, you know, most of the decisions have already been decided for us. And so for me, the way I see this initiative is to grassroots campaign by the people coming up and trying to get strength and defend themselves. And as we've seen in this council, you know, full with people speaking out against oil and gas. And while I'm not against oil and gas drilling, I think the people have a big decision to make in November. And whatever that is, you know, our job is to uphold the Constitution and follow the law. So, you know, I want to remain neutral and go with whatever the people decide.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting no on this, against Proposition 112. I think it's going to be bad for the economy of Colorado.
Thank you. You know, I also have some real concerns with 112. And I think it's very important to state that they are not, 112 and our local issues and what we're dealing with with oil and gas are not the same thing. When I look at 112, I think it's as much of an overreach as 74. That's why I supported a resolution opposing 74. One's a state setback issue, the other is how we as a local body have very little control over oil and gas. So given the fact that it's 2,500 feet, not just from an occupied dwelling, but to any water source, to any area deemed sensitive, and there's not enough clarity about who gets to deem that area sensitive, the land, I'm trying to think of the organization, just came out, is the Land Trust, State of Colorado, said that $230 million potential deficit in a three-year period of time for education taxes. And so because of the financial impact to State of Colorado, and because all of my colleagues as the mayors in Adams County, Thornton, Northland, Federal Heights, Westminster, Broomfield, and even my colleague, the mayor of the city of Denver, and both gubernatorial candidates are actively opposing this, I as well will be opposing Proposition 112, and I'll be supporting the resolution in opposition. Saying no other questions or comments from our council, I want to open it up to the audience. If you raise your hand, I'll let you come forward and talk to us about Resolution 112. Ms. Noble?
Mayor and council members, good evening. I'm Susan Noble, 10642 O'Leary Street. I first testified with our neighbors before you on May 7th of this year after we learned of oil and gas industry plans for our neighborhoods. At that time, we had no idea of the full extent of their plans, but we brought a giant map that showed what we did know, and it was shocking. We knew then that we were opposed to fracking schools and homes anywhere. We also knew that the Martinez case, which was before the Colorado Supreme Court, would determine whether the health and safety of your constituents would take precedence over the interests of the oil and gas industry. We were grateful when the council responded positively to our request and agreed to join the amicus brief in support of the young people who sued the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. That same May 7th night, we also asked for transparency. Here's where we are now, only five short months later. 200 wells proposed, bracked under 7,500 homes, including the homes that we just saw up on the screen, surrounded by 11 petrochemical plants averaging 6.6 acres in size when completed. Some might see dollars signs in those numbers. We look and see a concentration of toxic air, noise, truck traffic, and spills, and millions of gallons of water removed from our drinking water supply for fracking. And when the operators pack up and move or go out of business, we see a chemical industrial wasteland in Commerce City that could have been instead homes, parks, or places of employment. Along with many other residents, we have appeared many, many times before the city council and written and called. And only once during that time did one resident speak here in favor of fracking our neighborhoods. Tonight, after numerous closed-door meetings between city staff and oil and gas operators, you appear poised to take a position on the Citizens Initiative Proposition 112 that would give us, your constituents, safer setbacks from fracking to protect our health and Here's a visual of the impact of Proposition 112 on our community when safer setbacks passes. Safer setbacks 112 exists because... Safer setbacks 112 exists because of oil and gas industries' entrance and greed and elected officials' compliance. Only one bill giving citizens some control over oil and gas has passed the state legislature in eight long years. And the most recent change in COGCC rulemaking that took industry changes into account took five years. If we don't act, who will protect our health and safety? This is your legacy. With your commitment to transparency and as our representatives too, on behalf of Northwest Concerned Citizens, I'm sorry, North Range Concerned Citizens, we respectfully request tonight that each of you give your reasoning for taking a position on a citizen-initiated state proposition and that each of you state for the record why you are voting yes or no on Proposition 112. And finally, we respectfully request that each of you also explains how your decision achieves Commerce City's motto of a quality community for a lifetime. This is your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to come forward? Mr. Guillermo Serna, please come up. State your name and address, please.
Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. Longtime resident. In looking at government, you mentioned state, you mentioned federal. We're home rule. How is that going to affect us in that future home rule? Fire department, possibly Mill levy. Why? I haven't heard a single thing for the safety of our firemen in perspective to the equipment that they're gonna need and who's gonna pay for it. That's what might be bringing that cost up on the fire department. I don't mind fire homes for our fire department. But when it comes to adding an expense, we haven't really looked at that. All we're looking for is compromise, which is part of government, to compromise. It's not much with the technology that we have now to extend it to 2,500 feet. It's all underground, and they're doing it. The water department, it says we got gas for 100 years, but some of the water that we have is also for 100 years. What happens after that? If we have a disaster, who's going to pay for it? With children? With sickness? And we can't say it won't happen. We keep saying education. Don't make the same mistake that you made with the marijuana stuff. Where are, where's the education buildings that we were promised? We're not getting them. New people are coming in and we're growing. It doesn't hurt much to wait until the people decide what's happening so that we can know what's gonna face us in the future. That's what we gotta look at. That's why you're there. Not because of what I say, but, but the oath that you took to keep us safe in perspective to things that we really don't know yet. 100 years, what's gonna happen with all of this? Are we gonna stop and not have new energies that are out there? Or stop doing things that could help us in the near future just because we got enough for 100 years? We're a growing city. We say everything and growth pays for itself. We made that mistake. It doesn't. I buy a home, 10, 15 years later, my taxes are still high, and they keep going up. Expenses, more policemen. Think about that. All it is is just a compromise, nothing else. And we can wait to see what the people in Colorado say. The governors are, hey, they can oppose anything they want. It's a political issue. It's got nothing to do with what's going to happen with the state. Afterwards, they may compromise otherwise. We don't know that. So, all I ask is give this community the chance to grow the way we were promised to go, to grow when we invested in a 30-year loan for the infrastructure up north. And we still got about 100,000 people more to go. Keep thinking about it. It's not just saying yes or no. It's about the people that we have and the people that are coming and the high rises that may be over there close to the airport. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Christian Wolf. I live at 9251 East 107th Place. And I work in the oil and gas industry. My wife and I love living here. We're in Bell Creek, and we moved here purposefully, uh, because we like that area and we'd like to, to be here. We want to raise our family here. And I'd hate to move, you know, because of this. If this goes through, it's pretty much gonna kill oil and gas in the entire state. And it's a pretty big industry. Like you said, there's a lot of money involved. And not just that, it's a classic case of not in my backyard. I mean, everybody wants cars and we want the nice things that come with oil and gas, but nobody wants it near them. I don't know where we'd get it from, Texas or North Dakota or Saudi Arabia, somewhere else. Like you were saying, we're really not doing a lot of oil and gas development right now in Commerce City. I don't know if we're gonna have a moratorium or not. Uh, we talked about that a few months ago. But we should oppose Proposition 112 because in essence it's designed to not have a setback requirement, but the setback is so big, as you mentioned, it includes even intermittent waterways, which is pretty much the entire state, entire states included in that setback. It's really just a way to stop oil and gas completely in the state of Colorado, except for on some select federal land. And, uh, I'd appreciate it if we voted to oppose Proposition 112. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to come forward and talk to the council before we make a decision? Seeing none. Enough time went by that we had discussion. I forgot if I got a motion one way or another. I don't believe I have. So I'm gonna ask the council to, uh, provide me with a motion one way or the other. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to, for ballot issue 2018-81, to oppose the position on 112.
All right, approving Resolution 2018-81. Is that your motion? Okay, is there a second? Mr. Davis?
I have a second, no.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-81 in opposition of Proposition 112. Is there any additional discussion necessary? Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes, um, you know, earlier this year, I went down and testified at the state, um, when this was presented as a thousand-foot setback. And at that time, the oil and gas industry fought that as well. And that census is a grassroots, and the citizens came out and, uh, supported 2,500 setback. The industry now, I've, uh, I've learned, uh, is asking that they would go along with a thousand-foot setback. Well, you know, when you have opportunity to work with the citizens of Colorado on this initiative, as they just have asked for a thousand-foot setback from property, from the school, not from the front door, but the school property, um, a lot of discussion around that. And that was turned down as well. So a lot of these things, there was compromise and then reasoning behind that, and that was turned down as well. So, it's unfortunate, it has to come down to 2,500-foot setback when a thousand-foot was, with our legislators at the State House to go ahead and accept that thousand-foot setback. And now it's 2,500-foot setback because our citizens were, uh, were ignored. And that's where it comes to, comes to play here in, in Commerce City to be, uh, and I understand about the, the jobs and, and no one wants anybody to lose their job. And, um, I've gone to, uh, a lot of, uh, energy information, um, conferences and, and discussions on future jobs. Um, we just had a transportation summit last week, and they talked about automation and, and, uh, trucks because right now the, our workforce for replacement of truck drivers is next to nothing. The average age for a truck driver is 47 years old. There's no, no, hardly anyone coming in, in their twenties to take over those jobs. Now, when it comes to oil and gas, um, and the industry there, the transition now is transitioning over to a different energy source, which is wind and solar. And, um, I, you know, last month or month and a half ago, I went to Washington, and we, we talked about transitional workforce, where if the energy source changes, what about the people on the front line? And my thing is, we have people who are in industry working right now in the oil and gas industry, and that, i-if that, that form, if that changes or energy source switches over, we have to make sure those people who are in that industry are taken care of as well and not leaving anybody behind. So, if things change, we go to wind and solar and the technology, that, that technology is getting better, that you guys get an opportunity to be retrained and to continue to make or make more of what you're making right now. It's not about you losing, it's also about making sure when we go forward transitioning that you guys are included. And so, um, that's why I'm voting no on this opposition because the, uh, our placement here, because this is a state ballot, not Commerce City ballot, as what we're gonna have before us with the fire department. So, I'm gonna be voting no against this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. But before I do, I want to make sure you all know, a yes vote is in support of a resolution in opposition of 112. A no vote is, uh, a vote, uh, to not do the resolution in opposition. Just so everybody's clear. All right, I'll call for the roll call vote. For the record, it's tied. Mr. Attorney, tie goes to the runner, right? Fails.
That's correct.
Right? So, um, that's the way it, it turns out. It is a, uh, we will not be doing a resolution in opposition, um, due to the fact that we had a tie. We'll move on in our agenda. All right. Administrative council business. We need to set a special meeting for October 29th for the purpose of conducting the city manager, city attorney, and municipal judge evaluations. And I need to know if, let's see, let's set that meeting first. October 29th at 6 o'clock, Brian, is that what you're looking at? Is that, does council have any concerns with October 29th at 6 o'clock?
That would be the fifth Monday. So, if council does set a special meeting for that date, we'll let, uh, School District 14 know that we won't be having a joint meeting with them on that evening.
All right. Is any, any concerns? Mr. Douglas?
No, that was from before. Thank you.
Mr. Wadiola?
Clear. Just in, I mean, just in case we need more time. That way we give them a fair enough time, each person, and we're not here till 11:00.
Mr. Sheasley and I will be here at 8:00 on that day. We're happy to start anytime after 8:00. It's really up to council members' ability, uh, to arrive earlier than 6:00. Totally fine with us. I imagine it'd be okay with the judge as well. It's whatever council's availability is.
All right, 'cause we're used to coming here at 6:00. Is everybody okay with 6:00? Or is somebody wanna make a recommendation to have it earlier than 6:00?
Because we're doing three of them.
I know. Yeah.
Yeah, that's true too, whoever can.
Can, can everybody be here at a time before 6:00? I mean, Jose, are you trying to maybe say 5:00?
I was thinking like 5:30 to 6:30, and then 6:30, 7:30, something like that, an hour for each evaluation.
So, you're thinking 5:30 instead of 6:00? Anybody have a concern with 5:30 rather than 6:00?
About 5:00.
We can do 5:00. It's up, up to the council, I'm asking. Can you do 5:00, Oscar?
I can.
No? 5:30 is the earliest you can make it? Okay, and I, I think it's important that the whole council be here. So, uh, I have, I have, uh, 5:30 is the earliest Oscar can make it. Um, is everybody okay with starting at 5:30? Any concerns with 5:30? All right, then, I need a motion, uh, to set a special meeting for October 29th at 5:30 PM for the purpose of conducting the city manager, city attorney, and municipal judge evaluations. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion for us to attend a meeting at 5:30 on October 29th for the purpose of conducting the city manager, the city attorney, and the municipal judge evaluations.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wadiola?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to set that special meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right, now, um, does anybody have any business to bring before the city council for administrative council business? I know Mr. Douglas does. Uh, Mr. Douglas, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is a council request because it's over $300 to attend the EDCC 2018 Drive, Lead, and Succeed Conference. I've attended these in the past. This goes under training, not under travel, and, uh, just requesting to participate in this conference. It's gonna be up in, uh, Estes Park. It's a three-day conference. Uh, registration cost is $2.50 for elected officials. Lodges, they reduce rates to, uh, $99 a night, and, um, asking, um, for council's approval to allow me to go to this conference.
All right, is there any concerns from the council or questions for Mr. Douglas concerning the conference in question? Seeing none, is there a motion to allow the expenditure for Mr. Douglas to attend this said conference? Mr. Davis?
I make a motion to allow Mr. Douglas to attend the conference.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Wadiola?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for Mr. Douglas to attend, um, said conference, and, uh, we'll ask for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All I'd ask is, uh, Mr. Douglas, bring back some valid information as to, uh, what information you gather there that would be beneficial to our community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, reports. City manager?
We did send this week's, uh, edition of the city manager report towards the end of last week. Happy to answer any questions that council may have. Nothing further.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I sent out the, uh, September litigation report this morning, and, uh, if council has any questions on that, they can let me know. There's also an email I sent out last week on another matter, if there's no concern about that one. I'll proceed on that. The other item of note is that I will be attending the CML Fall Attorneys Conference this, uh, this week, towards the end of the week, and presenting, along with, uh, the former Aurora City Attorney and the Fort Collins City Attorney to that gathering of attorneys up there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, start out with, uh, ribbon, ribbon cutting for Los Marges. I know several people were there. I didn't get there until after the ribbon cutting, but I want to thank, um, Rick Teeter as our mayor pro tem for being there during that ribbon our mayor pro tem for being there during that ribbon cutting and making some remarks, as well as staff and some other council members who did, did go to that. I did show up and got to visit a little bit with Councilman Madera, the owner, as well as the owner of Los Marges. I would tell you, I had lunch there again Friday. I would recommend if you're a resident and you haven't tried it, or even if you're not a resident and haven't tried it, Hundred and Fourth and Chambers, just up there by, just to the south of Seven-Eleven. In-line, it's an in-line shopping center. But go up and try out the Los Marges Restaurant. Lady that owns it is very nice. They have good prices and they have really good food, so give that a try. Rotary, of course, every week I'm at Rotary on Wednesdays. Then, last Wednesday, we had a ton of different events that took place. We had the volunteer recognition dinner for our senior residents here in Commerce City and I know several council members went to that. And I know specifically, Councilmember Hughesman and Councilmember Frank attended that. And then, did you go to that as well? And then, Councilwoman Elliott. And then, I think some others, after some other meetings ended, went over and joined them. But that's one that I hate to miss every year, but I did have to miss it this year. So, thank you to the council members that were there, supporting our senior volunteers because of the amount of work that they do for our community. And then, we also had a meeting scheduled with the State Board of Education. One of the board members came down and met with city council members to talk about and deliberate about issues concerning District Fourteen. And I know, Mr. Douglas, you were there, right? Mr. Wadiola? Mr. Davis? And Oscar, is that where you were as well? And so, they handled that particular meeting with that state board member, state school board member and our District Fourteen board was there as well and some residents. And then, that evening, I was in Highlands Ranch for the Metro Housing Coalition Political Forum with Oakwood Homes. And it was very interesting because they had a panel and they talked about upcoming initiatives and ballot measures and specifically Amendment sixty-six, which would be a no-growth initiative that was pushed to be on the ballot, did not make the ballot this year. Lakewood Mayor was also on that panel, talked about where they're at in the legal process because there was a no-growth or low-growth initiative passed in Lakewood a year ago. And so, they're still fighting that particular taking, I guess you could consider it. So, it was, it was informational. They did explain that they don't think sixty-six has gone away completely. They think that we'll see that potentially next year or the following. Colorado has a history of if you didn't get something passed this year, just run it again the next year or the next year or the next year. So, we think that there's still potential for that statewide measure to reduce growth to one percent, I believe, of the previous year's growth and the county would decide where that growth would occur within the county. So, keep that in mind that sixty-six may be gone for this cycle, but may not be completely gone. So, it was very informative, but I want to thank the council because we were really dispersed amongst multiple events that Wednesday evening. Did you have Friends of the Front Range that same night?
We had Friends of the Front Range.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The dinner?
Yes.
So, we did have the Moonlight Dinner out at the Refuge, but I believe that was a couple of weeks ago. And we thank the Friends of the Front Range for having that event every year. And we had that right here at our visitor center at the Refuge. And the last thing I want to make note of tonight, we were all invited and could not go because of this meeting, but usually every year I go to their anniversary event over at Bella Yoga. And tonight, or today, this evening at six o'clock was their anniversary event. It was their ninth anniversary to boot. So, I want to just do a shout-out to Bella Yoga as congratulations for making it nine years in the Bell Creek community. So, congratulations to Bella Yoga. That's all I had on my reports. If somebody has something they want to add, now's the time to do so. Otherwise, I'll move on in the agenda. Mr. Davis? Your light's not coming up here, by the way.
It's not, okay.
Okay, so we'll have to get that figured out.
Okay. I had the chance last week to visit a couple of grand openings. One was Any Home Realty, which is located at sixty-twenty-five East Sixtieth, excuse me, in the shopping center down here. And it's a family-owned business. They opened up a, a realty company that is a storefront operation. They caters to everyone, but especially for the Spanish-speaking community and it's a gem for Commerce City because there it is. You can walk in and you can talk to the owners. It's a family-owned business and they were excited and they worked really hard to bring that into our community. And so, I was honored to be able to, as well as Councilman Madera, who joined me there, to be able to celebrate their grand opening with them. I also got to go by the Aliente, excuse me if I'm mispronouncing that right.
Aliente?
Aliente, Community Development Partners. They allowed me to be part of a graduation ceremony with one of their classes where they offered a three-day class to, to local citizens, to everybody, but we did have some local Commerce City citizens in there and graduated with the small business food truck graduation. They taught them pretty much the groundwork up of how to start a small business and how to keep that business going with the I-70 corridor, needing food twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week coming up. They, they're going to cater to them. I know the city council, I found out, gives some money to that foundation and I can tell you, that money is well-spent because three of those graduates in that class graduated and they'll get their business license and we business partners here in Commerce City with their own food trucks. And so, that was pretty special to, to attend that. And I believe that is all at this time. Excuse me, I had one more thing I wanted to add. I also visited the Commerce City Historical Society and for anybody that has not been there, I highly recommend you go by our Historical Society. I had never been in there before. I heard about it, I read about it and I went in there and I met Deborah and she gave me the tour in there and there are some amazing things that tell our history of all aspects of Commerce City, things that date back way before the town or the city was a city and the farming, the water, why we're here and a lot of pictures, a lot of hard work, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into making their location what it is today. So, I would highly recommend if anybody has not been in there, walk in there and you'll be pleasantly surprised. That's all I have, sir.
Thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Davis. I was glad to see you there when I stopped by for their reception as well and I know there were several staff members there as well. Laura made it, Chris Kramer made it. I believe several other council members probably stopped by throughout the day. So, again, congratulations and thank you to the Heritage and Cultural Center.
Heritage and Cultural Center.
All right.
I was pleasantly surprised that they have a payphone in there as the historic items. You know your old win.
Yeah, that wasn't that long ago, Steve. All right. If there be nothing further to come, Mr. Douglas, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say I took a tour along with other board members for Parks and Recs and we toured the city of all the different inner workings of the Parks and Recs. And there's, I think there's about twenty-eight of them and we pretty much got to see all of them. We also had opportunity to go and visit the existing rec center, the progress that's being made inside there and it's pretty cool knowing what the size used to be and where it's gonna be here in the next few months. They're doing a great job. The interior is amazing. Also attended on Friday Transportation Summit and Colorado's car, I mean, from, well, Ford was there, I'm sorry, Don Butler, the executive director, Connect Vehicles with Ford Motor Company, spoke and he was saying between, from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three, all their cars are gonna come out, are gonna be connected, cars are gonna be talking to other cars like Toyota, Chevy, they're all gonna have the same technology. And there's gonna be a rollout of 5G technology to coincide with this new technology. Got to hear from the trucking industry that they're doing a lot of platooning. Here in Colorado, it's testing, but in the flatlands of, across the country, platooning is going on where independent truck drivers will link their vehicles up with a distance of forty feet and where the front trucks lead and the back truck, what happens is they can steer, but the front truck operates the gas and the brake. And that with the front truck will save on fuel is, is there four to seven percent, but the tag-along will save ten percent. And they had a short video of how that works. And then, Miller Coors, one of the panels, there was three different breakout sessions and out of the three, you could do two. They repeated all three, but you can only, you know, pretty much do two if you wanted to see all of them in succession. So, one was on freight, the other one was on community, one was on purpose. And I did, I went to the, one on freight and one on purpose. And the freight was interesting because Miller Coors, they used to have their own fleet of vehicles, trucks that went out through, across the country to, look at beer, one of those Coors, now Miller's Coors come along and it's all independent. And that, that pool is shrinking as far as drivers. They're individually contracted, so these drivers want to be able to get their load, drop and then hook and continue. Back in two thousand seventeen, there was some technology that was put on truck drivers that they're only allowed to drive a certain number of hours. And if they exceed that, their truck gets shut off in a certain period of time, so they have to pull over to a safe area and just rest for in-between their shift. Well, they're coming to find out, there's so much growth here in Colorado, it's, they're finding places where they used to pull over and park are not there anymore. And so, that industry is also looking at driverless trucks to make their delivery. So, a lot of things are changing here in Colorado and you can go on the CDOT Transportation website and there's some interactive videos there that you can see the different changes that are going, that are gonna happen here in Colorado. And, and the council is also invited to take a tour of the Panasonic, which is off Sixty-first and Pinia, and see their innovative ways that they're gonna have their gig city. So, a lot of exciting things happening. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Now, if there be no further business to come before the city council of Commerce City, we are adjourned. But don't leave. We have a NIGID meeting, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'd ask...